This call is called as many to order.
Thank you, Mayor. One A roll call and possible action on the excusing of any absent member of the governing body. Well done.
Uh, President?
President?
Here.
President?
Here.
President.
Great.
Okay, thank you, absent member.
Take it.
All in favor?
I have.
Close, if they're excused.
Thank you. Item one B pledge allegiance and invocation by Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. God, you have entrusted us as ambassadors of your word. Please guide us as we carry out your work. We seek you first in all we do. We give you our residents, our leadership, our customers, our workforce, and our business. Let us always be mindful of their service. We confess that we are nothing without you and our trust is in you completely. Amen.
Okay, moving on to proclamations.
Yes.
Uh, proclamation two A proclaiming May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one as Alonso Cantu Day. Is anybody here?
Mr. Cantu.
Yes. Come on up.
You guys want to come up to the podium? Don't be shy. Come on, Lexi. And right there in front of that podium, right there. Yes. For you guys who don't know, this is Ms. Yoli Cantu and her daughter, Lexi. And we're glad to have you guys here today. It's a historic day for the city of FAR and for your family. Because we know nothing gets done without having a strong family, strong wife, right? Always there that we know that have been able to have the luxury of doing what we want. It's only because we have a very strong wife and we have great children and families support everything we do. And so this is something, a token of the city of FAR, this resident wanted to be sure was read aloud and uh, and need to be recognized as the family, especially your husband, Mr. Cantu, for all your dedication and service for the entire people of the Rio Grande Valley, for the state. So whereas Alonso Cantu, Alonso Cantu began his career in the building industry in nineteen seventy-eight, shortly after graduating from the University of Houston with a Bachelor of Business Administration in Finance. And whereas Mr. Cantu has been credited by many as being a central driving force behind the transformation of the business and political landscape of South Texas, the third fastest growing metropolitan statistical area in the country. And whereas as a banker, developer, philanthropist, and dedicated community organizer, Mr. Alonso Cantu exemplifies the highest standard of community leadership. And whereas Mr. Cantu is the chairman and CEO of Cantu Construction. And under his leadership, Cantu Construction was awarded the Minority Business Development Agency, the National Minority Construction Firm of the Year by the U.S. Department of Commerce. And whereas Mr. Cantu also serves as chairman of the board of Lone Star National Bank, a Hispanic-owned and operated financial institution. The bank serves four counties across South Texas, including Hidalgo, Starr, Cameron, Bear. Since nineteen ninety-seven, under Mr. Cantu's leadership, Lone Star National Bank has grown from one hundred and seventy-five million dollars in assets to two point two billion dollars and with thirty-two branches. And I remind you, it was started in FAR. Whereas in nineteen ninety-nine, Mr. Cantu joined a group of eight surgeons who started a day surgery facility and a small ambulatory surgery center. Mr. Cantu was the driving force behind the expansion of the partnership from the original eight physicians to the present facility known as Doctor's Hospital Renaissance Health System, DHR. At present, DHR is owned by a partnership consisting of over five hundred partners, has a local economic impact of over seven hundred and sixty-six million dollars per year, and employs over forty-six hundred individuals. And whereas for his exceptional work in the community, Mr. Cantu has been recognized nationally by receiving two prestigious awards. The J.C. Penney Golden Rule Award in two thousand for outstanding community service and education, and the two thousand and five National Medal of Excellence for community service from the Congressional Hispanic Caucus Institute. And whereas Mr. Cantu has also been recognized by the University of Texas Pan American by being the recipient of its ninth annual Bridge Builder Award. The award is given to a person who has made significant contributions to education locally and statewide. And whereas, in twenty twelve, Mr. Cantu was honored by the University of Houston president as a medal recipient. The medal is the highest honor awarded to those who have improved the university community, either through their presence as inspirational guests or as long-term supporters of the university's mission. It is the highest honor bestowed to friends of the university who have a legacy of enhancing their community. Also, in twenty twelve, teaching and mentoring communities presented him with a TMF Hall of Fame Award, which recognizes a former migrant worker who has championed the cause of early education for disadvantaged children. And whereas in twenty thirteen, Mr. Cantu was honored with a distinguished alumni award by the University of Houston. The purpose of this award is to recognize and honor alumni who have made significant contributions to society and whose accomplishments and careers have brought credit to the university. And whereas Mr. Cantu is one of the original founders of the Valley Alliance of Mentors for Opportunities and Scholarships, known as Vamos. Vamos was established in nineteen ninety-six by a group of local business and civic leaders who realized a dire need to improve educational opportunities for students in the Rio Grande Valley. He serves as the chair emeritus for the Vamos Board. Under his leadership, Vamos has raised over eighteen million dollars and created three endowment programs that have added additional scholarship opportunities for Rio Grande Valley residents. And as were asked, as part of his continued support and commitment to higher education, Mr. Cantu donated one million dollars to the University of Houston for the purpose of awarding scholarships to deserving students. And thank you for the, I know you guys had something to do with that as a family, so we appreciate that. Whereas on November eighth, twenty nineteen, Mr. Cantu was appointed to the University of Houston System Order Regions by Governor Greg Abbott. Mr. Cantu, Mr. Cantu will serve on the Academic and Student Success Committee, Facilities, Construction, and Master Plan Committee, as well as the Finance and Administration. Region Cantu's term will expire August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And for the record, he's the first border region I've ever met in my life, just so you know. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the entire city commission, do hereby recognize with respect and gratitude to Mr. Cantu and his family, his endless support and commitment to higher education and the overall betterment of entire communities, and hereby proclaim the seventeenth day of May, twenty twenty-one, as Mr. Alonso Cantu Day. And winners were up, I hereon to set my hand and cause to seal the city of FAR to be affixed on this seventeenth day of May, twenty twenty-one. There you go. Now, if you guys want to say any words, you're welcome to before we take our photo.
Well, we're very humbled and honored that you would decide to choose Mr. Cantu, and we greatly appreciate any support that we've received from the city of FAR. And um, is it the mic? And thank you for everything that you've done, so.
Of course, yeah. No, we recognize, like I said earlier, Yoli, we know without a, without a strong backbone, the family unit, nothing gets done. And we know that he's been a success in his own right, but if it wasn't for you sharing him, sacrificing your time, putting up with our husbands' crazy ideas, nothing would have gotten done. And so we're very grateful. We're happy that you're here with us, and I know we're gonna meet later today. But we wanted to have this opportunity to say thank you personally. I don't know if Bobby or the commissioners want to say anything else before we take the photo.
Well, yes, definitely. It's an honor to have you all here first and foremost. I personally know Mr. Cantu, Alonso Cantu, and he has not just for himself, has helped so many other businesses in the area. Not just businesses, the schools, the kids, has mentored a lot of individuals and people that my, my daughter in high school, a friend of hers went to him one day and asked if he could mentor him one day. Well, the gratitude that, I mean, it was just, he dropped everything he was doing. And we all know how busy Mr. Cantu is. He had had the individual follow him for a full day, and this individual stepped it up, finished school, four years, is a businessman, is a local businessman, is in construction. And hopefully someday he can, he aspires to someday be a Mr. Alonso Cantu. So no, definitely my hat's always been up to Mr. Cantu and have a high respect for him and everything he's done for our community.
Yes. Anybody else? Can you join us up here? I'm going to face that way and take a photo with you guys.
Okay, ready? And one, two, three, smile. Wonderful. Let's just see one more of those. Okay, ready? One, two, and three. Thank you. No, without the mask. Okay, ready, ready? One, two, three, and smile, everybody. Okay, one more. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Uh, moving on, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Proclamations. We have a house full room tonight. Two B proclamation proclaiming May twenty-first as Mental Health Awareness Month. Who's here? Somebody from the PD? Mental Health Awareness Unit?
Good afternoon.
Chief.
Good afternoon, it is.
Good afternoon.
Don't be shy.
So Chief, you want to introduce your, I guess?
Here we have Sergeant Danny Garcia. He is the sergeant that's in charge of our mental health unit. We have Officer Cesar Riscano and Officer Jackie Rodriguez, who are the, we're missing one officer, part of the Nicolás the Peda, and the three are, the three officers and our supervisors that compose our mental health.
Wonderful. So before we get started, we have a bet going. I bet it that you have a suntan because you've been working so hard in the city of FAR in the hot sun. Some people tell you when fishing. I think I'm right.
I think you were right.
There you go. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
So whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall well-being, and whereas mental health issues are real and prevalent in our nation and our community. And whereas mental wellness helps to sustain an individual's thought process, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change or face adversity. And whereas long delays, sometimes decades, often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals obtain help. And whereas early identification and treatment can make a profound difference in successful management of mental health conditions and recovery. And whereas mental health wellness is a growing concern after more than a year-long pandemic that has traumatized the world and collectively tested all ability to cope mentally with our situations. And whereas despite our knowledge of the needs for mental wellness, the issue of mental health remains and often remains a forbidden topic of discussion. Whereas each business, organization, school, government agency, healthcare provider, and citizen can make a difference by promoting mental health awareness and helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has supported mental health and surrounded it and has discouraged individuals from seeking help. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the commission, do hereby proclaim the month of May, twenty twenty-one, as Mental Health Awareness Month. In witness whereof, I hereby on to set my hand and cause to seal the city of FAR to be affixed on this seventeenth day of May, twenty twenty-one. So Chief, this is the unit that was created?
Yes, sir.
From Chief Harvey and yourself for to deal with. I know you guys always have, you know, you have our backs, I understand, and but a lot of times the drama that we see unfold, not only on TV but our own community, a lot of it has to do with mental health, and you guys have always, as a department, taken on the chin to deal with mental health when you're not trained to be doing that. That's for health professionals, but nevertheless, you get called through nine-one-one calls and sometimes it leads to unfortunate situations. And we're so very excited when we heard about this and the fact that you get to do so well, uh, really says a lot about the leadership of the city of FAR's police department. So congratulations to all of you. Keep up the great fight. Uh, I don't know if anybody else wants to send any commentary?
Great job, guys. I mean, it's something unique to our area, very unique to the whole county. So it is something that we're real proud of. And the way you guys have tackled it, and we know that there are different situations out there, that it is a mental health problem, and not so much that the guy's on drugs or they think they they are, but they're just having problems and having a situation. So I know it's difficult and my hat's off to you all. You're all doing a great job. I've spoke to the chief about it and just keep up the good work.
Would you guys join us for a photo?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Congratulations. Also stay up, guys. Two C proclamation proclaiming the week of May fifteenth through May twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, as FAR Police Memorial Week.
Critic?
Yes, sir.
Without my glasses. Okay. Okay. Uh, thank you, gentlemen. Officer. Uh, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the FAR Police Department. Some sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately seventeen thousand injuries. Since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, over twenty-one thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in Washington, DC, and thirty, not three hundred and ninety-four new names of fallen heroes are being added this spring. And whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, the city of FAR hereby formally designates, publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Now therefore, I, Ramiro Calallero, uh, in behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the commission, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth twenty, uh, through the twenty-first, the twenty twenty-one, as FAR Police Memorial Week. In witness therefore, I have hereon to set my hand and cause to seal the city of FAR to be affixed on this seventeenth day of May, twenty twenty-one. Congratulations.
You know, this week is normally pretty tough on us. Unfortunately, the FAR Police Department has, you know, joined the fraternity of, like many other police departments across our nation. August ninth, twenty thirteen, was a very, very difficult date for us. We lost one of our own. And so, you know, when we have these events, it has a lot of special meaning to us. And and we do, as a department, want to thank each and every one of you in the commission because you've helped us honor and and keep the memory of Sergeant J.L. Garcia, uh, alive in the city uh, from last year, helping us commemorate the roadway for him there at the police department. And now, you know, giving us an audience to to say his name one more time, we are very appreciative. Uh, also, we would like to invite each and every one of you and the public. We're gonna be at the SDC, uh, Regional Center for Law Enforcement's Excellence today at six PM. We're gonna have a small police memorial event. Again, the public is welcome. Y'all are welcome. But hey, from the bottom of our hearts, as you can see, you know, we're fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters. We're just like everybody else. You know, we come here to do our job. We enjoy what we do, and we truly love the city of FAR. Thank you very much.
I'd like, I mean, J.L. was a personal friend of mine. I knew J.L. for probably twenty-five, twenty-five years at least, at least, when he first came in to the city, and he was a great officer. I don't know anybody that disliked him. He was just that likable guy that whenever you see him, he'd always have that smile on your face. And so once he was upon the community, he just warmed, it was the warmth around him that, you know, that aura around J.L. was always special. I'm not saying it because he was passed. I'm saying it because it's the truth. And I say he was a really good friend of mine, and it did took a little bit of all of us on that day that we lost a friend, a fellow officer. Uh, and yeah, this day is special, and this is a day that, you know, we should never forget him. I don't think any of us do that really knew J.L. because I'm sure when you're driving down the street, Chief, I mean, we've been friends a long time. You remind you a lot of things. I mean, I'm sure when he goes by Margaritas there back in the day, or when he was on the band, that he was always having those two or three tacos. Never failed, but yeah, he was one hell of a friend.
Yes, sir.
Chief, if you could give us the, the opportunity to take a photo with your team?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Can you come up here?
Yes, sir. Hey, guys, let's get in the back.
Congratulations, everybody. All right, moving on. And this one's kind of suspect, given that we just started EMS, but I guess it falls where it falls.
That's right.
Now, two D proclamation proclaiming the week of May sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as National Emergency Medical Services Week.
Commission, Mayor Commission, thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. Uh, this is our very first EMS week, obviously.
It is.
Uh, we are on our third day of operation. Uh, some of the people, our staff that we have here are staff that aren't on shift today. Uh, we were trying to bring some guys on shift today, but of course, we we have to continue to serve the public, right? So they're out running calls currently. Uh, but this is the very first EMS week for the city of FAR. Uh, we're super excited about the fact that we're able to do this. Uh, everybody that's here is, has taken ownership into it, and we have our team here today to celebrate EMS week.
Uh, yes, it is our first time. You're right. Uh, we've had some discussion with some of your employees. I know that this is, uh, this is your uniform, right? The one?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So it'll be changing, just so you know. So depending on, right, Cancer Awareness Week or others, we expect the colors to change.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
To reflect that. So just keep that in mind as well. And I know some of the guys aren't comfortable with pink, but you have to get used, you have to get used to it. That's one of the colors that will come up, just so you know. But we're very excited. We're, we know we saw a couple of calls already over the weekend, and
Yes, sir.
air transport as well, and, uh, working the weekend. I don't know what I mean to work, but I I know I worked this weekend. I saw our units at many different facilities already. So we know we're definitely gonna be staying busy and we are gonna hit our performa that we anticipated. So we're very happy about it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those experiencing sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap of providing important of hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatch, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments accomplishments of emergency medical services provided by designating Emergency Medical Service Week. Now therefore, I, the Nate Chavez, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the commission, do hereby proclaim that we come May sixteenth to the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as Emergency Medical Service Week. In witness whereof, I have on to here send the seal to the city of FAR. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. If I may have a small gift for everybody.
All right.
And again, thank you very much for the recognition during EMS week. We anticipate that we'll be up here quite a bit. We want to make sure we recognize the great work that our staff is doing, um, especially when it comes time to delivering babies, saving lives. We want to make sure that they're recognized for the work that they do. If we can get a picture, that would be.
Yes, and you'll be.
I'm excited.
You guys are gonna be working hand in hand with both the police department and the fire department.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
The plan is to have three, uh, locations in the city of FAR, one on the north side, one in the middle, one on the south side. But hopefully, we have three to thirty-two units per site, and then we can have a fast response time. We want it, we intend right now, we want it in twenty minutes, preferably in fifteen minutes every time people get called from the city of FAR. That's gonna be the goal, just so you guys have it in your head, what we anticipate happening.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Uh, last proclamation, two D.
Uh, last proclamation, two D proclamation proclaiming May sixteenth through May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one as National Public Works Week. Going up, everybody?
Oh, wow.
Are we getting capped?
No, sir, sorry.
Come forward. There's a lady behind you also, right? She's challenging a little bit, so we need to see you. There you go.
Mayor Commission, um, thank you very much for recognizing the Public Works Department, National Public Works Week. These are the employees that rain or shine, and lately it's been rain, that have been out on the, on the front line, and even in the cold weather, uh, the cold snap we had, uh, that are out providing the basic services to the citizens of Far and in the areas of streets, drainage, our traffic control devices, um, our fleet maintenance for all the fleets, uh, for all the vehicles in the fleet, uh, for animal services, um, and for recycling and for stormwater inspections. And this, these are just some of the services that we, we provide the citizens on a daily basis, and we want to thank, uh, these employees for the hard work that they do every day. Um, they're out there, rain or shine, seven days a week, uh, taking care of business. Um, and we also want to thank the city manager and the mayor and commission for continuing to support the mission of Public Works as, as one of the, the vital and basic services for the city.
Thank you. Gracias a todos. Thank you, all you guys. You maintain our streets, you guys help with the drainage. You guys are the, are the heart and soul of the city, so I thank you. We call on you guys almost on a daily basis, and the city truly couldn't function. So thank you. You run a great department. Now, um, you also came up with, uh, I think you're working with Hilda on the recycling.
Yes, sir.
And endeavor that, uh, you want to share a little bit about that?
Sure, Mayor. We're looking at an initiative to provide curb-side recycling. Right now, the City of Far has a recycling program where the citizens have to bring the recycling, recyclable commodities to us, um, either at the Police Department, on the south side of the city, or at the Public Works Facility on the north side. And so, we're looking at providing curb-side recycling where you would deposit your recyclables in a, in a blue bin. You would take it out, uh, to the curb on, on some frequency, and the, uh, city would come by, come by and pick it up on a regular frequency, um, so that it save you the time and effort to bring it to us and, and have the initiative at your doorstep.
Right. And there's a fee associated with that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And unfortunately, um, you know, solid waste and recycling is a, is a expensive endeavor, um, and it's primarily because of the heavy equipment that it requires to handle the solid waste, the transport to the facility, to the landfill facility, and then what we call the tipping fees, which are the disposal fees. And so unfortunately, it's not a city that, that, uh, your ad valorem or your sales taxes can support, and it requires a service fee to provide that service.
And I think, uh, and that's fine. So I think, uh, in this, we'll, we'll talk to the commission as a whole, see what they want to do, whether they want to put it on a ballot or, or just do it. I, I think, uh, we'll entertain that before we move forward to make sure the citizens know what they're getting themselves into.
Yes, sir.
But it's a great endeavor, and I'm glad you guys have done all the research.
Yes, sir.
But we make sure we have their backing.
Yeah, I would like to say thanks to Pilares out there, after the storm and flash warning that we had this weekend. And I'm very proud of the public works that they were already out there, taking care of business, making sure that people were taken care of, especially those areas that were, that remained flooded for a couple of hours. And Public Works did a great job on making sure that water was taken out, and I'm very glad and proud of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, when we had those big storms, I guess, recently, you know, sixty mile an hour winds, there's a lot of limbs, a lot of, you know, blocked streets. I was driving around with somebody from the city and, you know, ran across, you know, Public Works. They'd been working since two o'clock in the morning, and it was already like five o'clock, six, you know, the afternoon.
Yes, sir.
So they'd put in, you know, they were exhausted, but they were still doing what they needed to do. So, you know, my head, you know, I'm very proud of their, their response to the community. And, uh, that's, that's the type of work and dedication that, you know, the City of Far gets. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Proclamation, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Far. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And where, whereas not only do they maintain the calm, professional, and disciplined demeanor that handling a nine-one-one call requires, but these first responders also think and respond rapidly to crisis situations, and often lend the supporting voice to reassure frightened, upset, and confused callers. And whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Far, to gain knowledge and, uh, to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty-twenty-one marks the sixty-first annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and whereas we urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works, professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Now therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim week of May sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one as National Public Works Week. Thank you, congratulations, guys. And, um, Mayor Commissioners, just as a little, um, extra thing, we do these proclamations for, for everybody, and especially for our staff. Uh, a lot of times, it's a thank you that we give them. Uh, this year, we're going a little beyond that. Now there are food trucks up and running. I did, uh, tell Melanie, and she's been working on it last week, to, uh, get a food truck to every, at the EMS headquarters, P D, and Public Works, uh, one day a week, or every day this week, at one, at every location, Public Works.
All right.
EMS and. So we're getting a free lunch in the city, so you'll pick up the tab. Item number three, public testimony. Anybody sign up? Man. Item number four, public hearings. Anybody set up for the Development Services hearings? Thank you. Uh, city managers' reports. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, five A, submission of sales tax report for May twenty-twenty-one. Uh, yes, sir, another good month for the City of Far. We are up eighteen point four-two percent in true growth, uh, this year, in this month, and it puts us at number four in the, the region. So it's very, very good.
Yeah.
Uh, six B, submission of property tax collection report. Uh, we are up also one point eight oh percent, up to ninety-three point four percent for the year. That's good. Also, everything's up, everything's good. Parters in the audience, have any specific questions on both those items? Also, one thing to report, uh, last week after the rains, we did do mosquito spraying. Tonight, we're going to go out again, right, Pilar?
That's right.
We're going to spray the whole city again tonight for mosquitoes. So again, Public Works is out after hours. Uh, six, all items in six are consented, are routinely non-controversial, and you can enact them in one motion, so you shall choose.
Okay, approve. Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seven, ordinance resolution, seven A, consideration and action, if any, on ordinance dissolving the Far Events Center. Department provided for reallocation of inventory, assets, concession supplies, permits, and licenses, as allowed by law, ratification of prior acts, repeating conflicting ordinances and effective date. Yes, sir, this is the first reading of a three-reading ordinance. As I informed you all last meeting, we are transitioning the Event Center to our new EMS headquarters, so we are doing away with the Event Center.
Okay, approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven B, consideration, action, if any, on ordinance, amending ordinance, oh, twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen, regulating ambulance service in the City of Far, adoption of first reading. Yes, sir, this is, of course, an, an evolving department. Uh, as we take on different tasks, we have to amend the ordinance. This amendment gives us the, uh, air charges we need for the helicopter.
Will we approve?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven C, consideration, action, if any, on resolution determined of public necessity to acquire certain real property, giving notice of an official determination to acquire real property for public purpose, establishing procedures for the acquisition of market value for the property to be acquired, and directing the city manager or doesn't need to communicate offers to owners for purchase of property, appropriate funds, and authorizing condemnation proceedings by the city attorney contingent on available funding. Uh, yes, sir, we are looking to set up a secondary nature park. We all have some land that's been identified, and we want to pursue it.
Great.
Let's approve.
Um, hang on one second.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. One up, send you. Yes.
Thank you. Seven D, consideration, action, if any, on resolution authorizing publication of notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation series twenty-twenty-one A for design acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public works and authorizing certain other matters relating thereto. Uh, yes, sir, this is, uh, for the Texas Water Development Board, for the south side, uh, regional intention pond that we just had the groundbreaking forum. Uh, this is approximately a loan, a correction, uh, COs to be issued at five million dollars with one point three million dollars in, uh, sorry, one point seven million dollars in loan forgiveness. So the total is three point one seven million will be financed in a responsible form.
So move.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven E, consideration, action, if any, on resolution appointing mayor pro temp and alternate mayor pro temp. Yes, sir, after election, it's customary, we do both positions. Y'all can recommend them together, or you can vote on them separately, but they go in the same resolution.
Mayor, I was, uh, I was discussing, uh, with some of the commissioners that, um, maybe we should alternate. We have a Commissioner Chavez as the alternate mayor pro temp, and maybe we could rotate and have Bobby be the alternate commissioner, be the mayor pro temp, and, uh, for this term, if it's okay with them.
Okay, so that's a motion?
A motion to.
To do what?
To recommend, uh, Daniel Chavez as the mayor pro temp and Bobby Carrillo as the alternate mayor pro temp.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, seven F, consideration, action, if any, on resolution appointing, reappointing three regular members of the Board of Adjustments. Yes, sir, uh, Mayor Commissioners, the, the appointments of Hector Guerra Senior, Juan Lu Pecano, and Ruben Luna are up. Uh, they all wish to serve, re-serve on the board, and the appointment is up June sixth.
So move, people.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight A, consideration, action, if any, authorizing Caskan S A, the C V, Ceneros Civiles, to conduct field studies and conceptual plan phase four for the bridge expansion project twin bridge span, second span in Mexico. Uh, yes, sir, this is the, the Mexican part to make sure it, it matches up with the American part of the bridge. The total charge is three hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. That was recommended approval.
Over approval.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Purchase nine-nine A, consideration, action, if any, authorizing Police Department to purchase two twenty-twenty-one BMW R twelve fifty R T dash P police motorcycles for a total of fifty-six thousand dollars, fifty-six thousand eight hundred and six dollars and seventy-two cents for BMW motorcycles of North Dallas. Yes, sir, uh, new police chief was struck to start off a motorcycle force. Uh, this is the first two vehicles or motorcycles we wish to purchase. That was recommended approval.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Why, why would we decide on the BMWs instead of the Harleys? Okay.
Go for approval.
Do a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Nine B, consideration, action, if any, authorizing city manager to ratify the purchase of two hundred fifty thousand dollars for manure repairs from Southern Trenchless Solutions out of La Feria, Texas, through buy board contract five-five-five dash one-eight. Uh, yes, sir, these manure repairs were already done. They were, uh, time was of the essence, they were already falling apart. This is the same contract, the same contract that we used before, so staff recommend them.
Mission to approve.
Second. Do we have a, a, like a schedule to, we're replacing all these?
Yes, sir, they're replacing approximately thirty-five a year.
Thirty-five a year. Okay. And so, every year, I mean, are we going to, when are we going to be done replacing them? Because they, how long do they last? They. Right. So next, uh, next meeting, bring in a schedule, bring in with the numbers and so forth, and also how long, what you're putting in right now, what we expect them to last, how long, regardless of traffic? So we'll know. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine C, consideration, action, if any, authorizing city manager to ratify the purchase of two hundred forty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars for Jones Buck Park splash pad from Vortex out of Columbus, New North Carolina.
Anilis.
Columbus, North Carolina, through buy board contract five-nine-two dash one-nine. Yes, sir, this was previously approved. Uh, the only difference was it was under the C mark contract. Staff took it on because we had better contact and got a hold of the people to come down. Takes about a year to come down, so when they had the time, we were in between meetings, so we authorized it to, uh, to get, uh, to execute the contracts. Staff's recommended approval.
Mission to approve.
Second.
Where are Jones Buck Park going to be on, the west, east, middle?
I believe it's on the west side. I'm sorry, yeah, on the west side.
West side? Okay.
How long will it take for you guys to start and?
Are you doing it? Internally, you guys are doing it. Right. Okay, so make sure you, you move that timetable up, because summer is when people want to use it, not in the fall. Okay. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine D, consideration, action, if any, authorizing city manager to purchase upgrade to New World Computer-Aided Dispatch Software for Interface for Emergency Medical Services and Fire Department in the amount of three hundred thirteen thousand two sixty-one. Yes, sir, this is the, uh, CAT system for EMS dispatching and fire. This was the last thing we needed to bring, uh, everybody under the same umbrella. Staff's recommended approval.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten A, consideration, action, if any, authorizes, authorizing the Far Police Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, Homeland Security Investigations. Yes, sir, this, this gives us two people on the HSI Task Force, two certified police officers. Staff's recommended approval.
Mission to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten B, consideration, action, if any, awarding a service contract. Ten B, consideration, action, if any, awarding a service contract for roadway street sweeping to Sweeping Corporation of America out of Houston, Texas, for bid items one, two, and three. Yes, sir. As you know, we do have three street sweepers that the city owns. Those things have been a nightmare to keep in service. We've kept them in service for a while. They keep breaking down. Pilar had the brilliant idea of going out for services, see what it compares to. So to purchase three street sweepers is six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. To sweep the streets once a month for a whole year is two hundred fifty-nine thousand. So we spent six hundred and seventy-six thousand, and we do it four times a year. We can pay two hundred fifty-nine thousand, get it done once a month. So that was recommended approval.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes? Thank you.
Thank you. Ten C, consideration, action, if any, authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter to a contract with an engineering firm on the city's approved list for traffic engineering firms to perform a traffic study for Sam Houston Boulevard between Jackson Road and Veterans. Yes, sir. We have been getting some complaints that the traffic is relatively slow, and people are going above the speed limit. It might be time just to get a traffic study and see if the speed limit is at the right spot.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes?
Thank you. Ten D, consideration, action, if any, authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with Mike, recall, how he calls us name? Peach? Consulting Services Inc. for ISO survey inspection. Yes, sir. Our ISO rating for the last ten years was due last year due to the pandemic. We pushed it off to this year. This person is a expert in the ISO and how they rate us. This is a big one for us. This determines if the insurance for the entire city and all the population, anything goes up or down, how many fire hydrants we have, how many fire trucks we have, the capability and all that. The contract is for thirteen thousand dollars. I think it's well-needed. So that was recommended approval.
Mission to approve.
I said thirteen in there. Twenty-nine? Okay, my bad. Let's misread it. Twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?[1744.16]